I haven't seen that front one.
Call to order, the December Hamilton County County Council meeting. Madam Honorable, may I have my vote card?
Yes, Mark Hall.
Present.
Amy Moss-Lominy.
Present.
Ken Alexander.
Present.
Sue Mackey.
Present.
Tim Griffin.
Present.
Steve Nation.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum with Mr. Beaver not in attendance.
May I rise for an invocation and pledge? Dear Lord, strengthen our confidence to lead and serve this community and bless those in the meeting, those here with us today, those are the lives that we will impact and encounter afterwards. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Do I have a motion for the approval of the November 1st, 2023 minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Do we have any public comments today? Cards? Nothing? Okay. Seeing none? All right. Committee reports. I have nothing to report other than, I guess I was at the Westfield, had a groundbreaking for the YMCA that was well attended and was a, this count, this body was mentioned and thanked many times for our generous support of that project. It's going to be an economic win that's going to combine health and wellness for the people of Westfield, but also economic vitality with a partnership with IU Kokomo that's going to be putting a nursing program in there. So it's very exciting moving forward.
Mr. President, the only comment I have is, we'll obviously discuss appointments or make appointments this evening. One note is that members of the public, we are looking for a Economic Development Board appointment for Sheridan specifically. So we will keep the portal open or it will be open now until our meeting on January 10th where we'll make a decision. So if you have friends in Sheridan, we would love to have applicants. That's all.
Please apply.
Oh, yes, I can go too. Additionally, as I was shared with council, we received the resignation of Tiffany Diblson from the Hamilton County East Public Library Board, and so that decision will also be made this evening as well.
And I'd like to, I thought the letter that she sent was professional. I'd love to have that put into our minutes, add to the record for our minutes.
I can send that to you to include. That'd be great. Thank you.
Byway.
We did not meet, but there's a small item on the agenda.
Finance. We didn't meet, but we want, I know after our, we have our meeting coming up that we'll probably be reintroducing that sometime in January.
Yes.
Personnel.
Did not meet.
Any other sinus items? All right. Tabled business.
Mr. President, knowing that normally at the end of the year, we do try to remove tabled business in efforts for the new year, I would, for item A, because I think the circumstances have somewhat changed. I know we need to have, there was an ARPA meeting discussion or to have an ARPA meeting to solidify, I think, some last kind of final improvements or appropriations, if you will. So I would make a request that we, item A and D would be untabled, I'm sorry, item A to be untabled and not to pass through, and it can be brought back once ARPA is discussed further. So that is my motion for item A.
So.
To basically.
Do we have a motion on table?
Second.
All right. We don't want to, we don't want to.
We don't want a second.
We don't want a second.
We want it to be removed from the agenda.
No, first you need a motion, the second to untable, then you would need a motion to.
Kill it, basically. Sorry.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Do I have a motion to move for, on this transfer, on this affordable housing transfer fund, 8950 ARPA? Seeing none? Eyes fails. Okay.
So just to be clear on that, that is so, since the money, there's kind of reallocation with ARPA, if I'm not mistaken, right, for some other projects. And so I think we've made the commitment that we'll fund affordable housing, but it will not be from this fund.
And I believe there's transfers later on that are accommodating some of this.
Yep.
All right. The next one, do we want to do the same with B, untabling that?
That was not one that I had on my list. I had.
Brad come back to the airport.
That's sweet. Oh, he can bring it back, yes. I would make the motion to untable for discussion.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion for resolution CC 0607 2023.2 for the purchase of real estate. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do I have a motion to move on that? Seeing none? Lacks a second. Or lacks a motion. All right, next one. We have a resolution CC 1101 2023.2. We have a motion.
I would like to motion to untable this and move to pass contingent upon the ARPA funding, which I think then the interlocal comes thereafter.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Do I have?
Make the motion to approve contingent on ARPA discussion, funding official.
Second.
All right, since a motion is second, inside this, there's two conditions that are listed in the resolution. The first one being that we will identify a funding source, the council, and so, which will be at the ARPA meeting, and we hope that this will come back in front of us with a positive recommendation from them. And the second item would be that it would have, it would be funded upon the completion of an interlocal agreement that our county council attorney will work with the four other jurisdictions on that interlocal.
This just allows them to go ahead and move forward.
Yep.
Because they doesn't need to sit here and not while we're waiting on ARPA, basically.
Any other questions, comments?
Just want to make sure I understand. So it's contingent upon the funding from the ARPA committee?
Correct.
Yes.
And then contingent, second contingency would be upon an interlocal agreement?
The interlocal, in the documentation, the resolution indicates that the interlocal will be created after, basically it goes through the funding mechanism, right? So if ARPA approves it, which they have verbally committed, it's just a formal meeting that needs to happen, and so.
At our joint meeting, everyone was in favor of this. It just needs a process.
Formal.
And the interlocal is Fishers, Carmel, and the county?
It's Fishers, Fishers, Delaware Township, Clay Township, Carmel, and the county.
Yep, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. Do I have, so a motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that passes. We want to, number D, that's the.
It's been discussed about untabling and passing for discussion, so if Tiffany wants to make that motion.
Motion to untable.
Second.
This is to, motion to untable resolution CC 1101 2023.4, purchase of real estate. Seeing no, motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Do I have a motion to discuss on this one?
Motion to approve.
Second.
This is with regards to the acreage related to sustainable housing.
Yep. All right. Any comments, questions? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. New business. Do I have a motion to approve under claims?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. County Council Board appointments.
Mr. President, if you will, I would like to make a motion, and I will read the individual appointments for each board that we've discussed and agreed to, if that is, okay, so I will make a motion, the following appointments, to the Hamilton County Council Boards and Committees. The Alcoholic Beverage Board, we've selected Mike Colby. We have selected for Economic Development Board for Carmel, we have selected Nikki Felix. For Fishers, we have selected Jamie Nieves. Hamilton County, we have selected Jim Geinbaum. Sheridan, as I mentioned, is on hold until we have someone. For Noblesville, we have selected Chase Bruton. Westfield, we have selected Joe Plankis. For the Hamilton County Redevelopment Commission, our council-appointed member, we have actually selected Mark Hall, a member of council. For the Hamilton County Visitor and Convention Commission, we have selected Lisa Haney, and our second appointment is Rachel Quaid. For the Hoosier Heritage Port Authority, we have selected Joshua Morris. For the resignation of the Hamilton East Public Library, as a result of Tiffany's resignation, we have selected Kim Logan. For the Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals, the Democrat member Bruce Freeman, the Republican member of William Sanders. And that concludes. Oh, I apologize. And then the Hamilton County North Library Board, Julie Davis. So that concludes the long list of appointments.
I'm not going to ask the second to repeat that. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And I'd just like to say, Madam Vice President, thank you for taking the lead on that this year.
And Sue's help as well. Sue helps a lot. Mr. President, just to, that was our appointments for the public. I'd like to go ahead and then make a motion for our individual council boards, if possible.
If the motion is on the table.
It is on the table. I will read my list of things. Do you want me to read my list?
Oh.
Do you need me to read my list?
I don't. I mean, you don't have to read it.
Okay, fine.
For the record.
I guess I probably do. Okay, so I will make this as quick as I can. County Plan Commission, Brad Beaver. Hamilton County Solid Waste District, Brad Beaver. Hamilton County Redevelopment Commission Board, Brad Beaver. Hamilton County Economic Development Corporation, Sue Mackey. Aviation, Brad Beaver. Council Parliamentarian, Steve Nation. Emergency Management Advisory Council, Tim Griffin. Extension Service, Sue Mackey. Insurance Committee, Mark Hall. ISS, Amy Moss-Lominy. Tourism Board, Ken Alexander. Assessor and Trustees, Brad Beaver. Additionally, the ARPA Committee assignment, ARPA Committee consists of Steve Nation. We've requested that the County Business Plan Committee be struck from forward committee movement. The Finance Budget Committee will include Brad Beaver, Sue Mackey, and Mark Hall. Personnel and management will include Tim Griffin, Ken Alexander, and Mark Hall. Sheriff Committee will include Tim Griffin, Sue Mackey, and Steve Nation. The Highway Bridge Committee, Ken Alexander, Sue Mackey, and Tim Griffin. The Nonprofit Committee, Tim Griffin, Sue Mackey, Amy Moss-Lominy. We have decided to change the Special Projects Committee to reflect Special Projects Oversight Committee. It will not include the Domestic Violence Shelter Study Committee. That can be removed. The committee itself will be membered by Amy Moss-Lominy, Ken Alexander, and Steve Nation.
So, Tim, is that, is your motion? Yes. So we have a, for, a motion to second from, all right, any discussion? I would say the only discussion I was like, we need to put Brad on more of these items.
He wasn't here, so that's all right.
Seeing no other comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Great. Next item, resolution CC 1206 2023.1, resolution approval, approving an interlocal agreement concerning a one-time distribution of public safety income tax proceeds. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any questions, comments?
I had written a note about this one that refers to an Exhibit A. There's no Exhibit A listed. Page before the signature page, and the commissioner says described on Exhibit A, and there's no Exhibit A.
Mark, look behind that resolution. There's two pages on the resolution. Look at the next page. It says interlocal agreement. That's the A.
So the or.
Interlocal agreement concerning a one-time distribution as a header.
That's the interlocal that's described in the resolution.
Yeah, we, it was going to be an interlocal, but after talking with Chris Jeter, we decided you actually can't create an interlocal with your own body. So we're just having you approve the terms of the interlocal via resolution. It's, I believe, and I think Robin probably knows the number better than I would, but it's about a million dollars plus or minus that would be coming back to the county through this, this transfer.
Mr. Parliamentarian, you're okay with the way it's written?
Yes.
Any other comments?
It's just incorporated within the document. Yes.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Ordinance CC 1206 23, 2023. A, ordinance authorizing Hamilton County to make advanced payments for material and services on public works projects. A motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
What's, what's happening prompted the need for advanced payments?
I can, I can answer that. I mean, the, this last year, the General Assembly approved the advanced, advanced purchases on public works projects, and Ken can probably talk more than I can about the advantages associated with that, but it's really on terms that the council determines. So I talked to Ken, and we kind of thought this would be a good place to start. Starts, it's not to exceed a million dollars on any single line item or project, but some, I think, Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it also can account for a lot of advanced lead times and design work and stuff like that.
So example would be like if we had to buy air handlers into our project and things like that, early procurement that might have to get done, and it might be a 24-month procurement process, but a project might only last 12 months. You'd buy that stuff while you're still designing the work, and then you'd get your GMP later, and this would authorize us to go buy that stuff, and then, and then reimburse it through the GMP once, once it's, once we go to bond.
Is it solving an existing problem, or is it a future solution for a future problem?
These are problems that we have on every project.
Got you. Thank you.
Because it's, it's not just those. It's, I mean, right now, wood doors are like 90, 90 to 120 days.
They're also not a million dollars.
Yeah, well, I know, but they add up. I'm just saying that it's, we're not going to spend a million dollars. It's, it's up to that.
And you can move that to whatever you want. I just, we kind of came up with that weird talk, and it was a good one.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. All right, so now we have the, I'm going to make this time to open a public hearing for additional appropriations and start with the General Fund 1,000. Do I have a motion for the court transfers of 186,000?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item, Commissioner 144 Amendment and Transfers for 15,503.
So moved. Second.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Order administration transfers for 43,926.
So moved. Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? ISS transfer of $200,000.
So moved.
Second.
See, a motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Emergency Management's, I'm going to put both of these in the, I would assume that we have a motion for both of them. Request to pursue reclassification of to part-time to one full-time position.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we have the transfer to cover that. I think it's 1,000, $1,333.
So moved.
Second.
That transfer is separate. It has nothing to do with. Yes, different.
It's different, okay. But it is 1,333. Okay, I thought it was a decimal, so. Okay, the motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have the Sheriff 144 Amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Seeing motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next fund, 1053, household hazardous waste transfer of 15,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Fund 1119, clerk record perpetuation transfer of 1,000.
So moved. Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Fund 1138 CCD transfer of 2.4 million.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Fund 1161, Local Public Health Service Fund 144 Amendment.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Fund 1169 for local road and street transfer for $115,000.
So moved. Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Fund 1175 misdemeanorment transfer for 400.
So moved. Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Fund 1179, park non-reverting operating transfer for 8,000.
So moved.
Second.
A motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Fund 1219, park and recreation transfer for $225,000.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Fund 4816 proceeds to the County Bridge Improvements Bond Series 2022 requesting $400.
So moved.
Second.
A motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. With the grant appropriation transfer reductions, we have three items. First one is Fund 8304 DUI task grant, DUI task force grant reduction for $39,600.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Fund 8315 fiscal year 2023 CD VG appropriation for $1,102,310.
So moved.
Second.
So motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Fund 8903, CARES Act Coronavirus Appropriation for $17,066.04.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And I will close the public hearing and open it up. Sheriff, do you have any announcements?
I do have one thing for you guys. I mentioned in your budget approval meeting that we sat down to sign a contract for our medical care provider. They had raised the price by about a half a million dollars. We went back and got some quotes from other vendors, from five other vendors, and last Friday, ACH notified us that they were discontinuing that contract, and they were going to be done with the sheriff's office starting January 1st. So we have engaged with another medical provider, and they are prepared to take over the contract, take all the employees that we have currently in the jail, and hire them on, and it looks like it's going to be a great arrangement. Their price is about, or let me get you exactly. It's going to be $433,907.88 more than we had budgeted for 2024, but I just wanted to make you aware of that number. We'll probably come back sometime March and April for that request.
Thank you.
All right.
Any questions or anything on that?
Well, consistency, service is great. We got the same people in there.
Yeah, it will be really nice to maintain the staff. We're pretty happy with how that's going, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Council Attorney?
Nothing for the group.
Anything for me personally?
Nothing for you personally.
Okay. Madam Attorney?
I sent you all an email regarding a 144 amendment for the Veterans Service Officer and asking for your approval for the Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. And then I just want to give kudos again to my staff and the Treasurer's Office. Settlement's done. It's out. And we've come a long way from the nights of going across the tunnel back and forth with tears and gnashing of teeth, and it's very slick, and I just want to give kudos to, again, my staff in the Treasurer's Office.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I will.
I have one thing. I just wanted to, Merry Christmas, actually.
Merry Christmas.
But I wanted to point out that when, Public Health Department, when Jason Reed did his descriptions, savings of $25,401 against the 24 budget. So, well done, Mr. Lomaski. Thank you very much for saving the taxpayer money.
This will be our last meeting for the year, so again, thank you. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Next, next one will be January 10th. Hope you all have a safe and happy holidays.
Please apply for Sheridan.
Sheridan.
Please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Being adjourned.